All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the August 26, 2025 Regular Board of Supervisors meeting. I'll call this meeting to order here at 9:01. And as customary, we'll start with a moment of silence. And I think Supervisor Owen, you have a moment of silence. Go ahead.
I do. Thank you. I'd like to recognize Harry Croll. He was a local Middletown resident. And on August 10, 2025, he passed away. He was born on June 23, 1935, in Lawrence, Pennsylvania. Harry was a beloved husband, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather, brother, uncle, and friend. He passed away peacefully at the age of 90. He lived his life devoted to families and loved sports and his community. He was a proud U.S. Army veteran, teacher, Coast Guard employee, and local saloon operator for 32 years. He owned the Noble Saloon in Middletown. Harry welcomed everyone with warmth, humor, generosity. He met the love of his life, Rilla, in Berkeley, California. And together, they were blessed with five children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren. A lifelong sports enthusiast, Harry especially loved golf and football, sharing his passion with friends and family. His kindness, humility, and devotion to loved ones will leave a lasting legacy.
All right. Any others? Trevor, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
In allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trevor. Are there any items to be considered that are not appearing on the posted agenda?
There are none of those items.
Okay. Next is our approval of the consent agenda. As customary, these items are non-contradversal. However, they can be pulled by anybody from the board or from the public. So if there anyone from the board would like to pull anything? Supervisor Sabatier?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item 5.2.
5.2. Any others from the board? I'll open it up to the public in case there's anybody that would like to pull anything from the public. Any on Zoom? All right. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 5.2.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0. All right, let's see. We are at our timed items. Our public input. If there's anybody in the public that would like to come up and talk about anything that's not on the posted agenda, please come up. We'll give you three minutes. Just know that because of the Brown Act, we're not allowed to comment or give any input back or feedback with your subject. So I'll go ahead and open it up for anyone in the public.
Sorry. Hi, I'm here for public comment.
All right.
Almost didn't make it, but I just made it on time. Thank God. Okay. Catch my breath. So can I give you guys each one of these? Oh, do I have one? Sorry. I wanted to make sure I made it on time. Okay. Leave wet breath.
Yeah.
Okay, are you guys ready?
Ready.
All right, so I'm here today because I've read the agenda. I see you guys are having a closed session with the person from Special District. Sorry, I'm still catching my breath. But these are the graphs that I put together. The sources that are actually with these graphs is from Special District's variance reports. And then also, the other for the graphs comes from the state of California. So if you look at it, in the last 30 years, we've had significant water loss. It runs around 30% all the way up to 60%. I understand that you guys are evaluating how sorry, I'm trying to catch my breath. But how her evaluation is on how she's been doing her job in the last year. So I'm here to speak for Spring Valley all the way around. We could say her performance has been less than par. If we are looking into this and we need to look into maybe a leader that would be looking into the grant funding instead of trying to put the cost on to the consumers. So if you go through these graphs, here's this page, this number two, shows you all the government funds that she could apply for to fix the failing system to where we can start saving money from our water system instead of using our property taxes to fund the broken water system. And then we can start fixing our deteriorating roads. Spring Valley Community Briefing, that's the water loss, as you can see. Those are from the variance reports of hers. I just put it into a quick graph for you guys. The second page of that will show you the percentage of each one of those. And so on the average, we are losing around 35.8% of our water every single year in the last 30 years. So that's pretty significant. The next report is a variance report. I just did 20 years for you guys. And you can see, this is where the state California comes in, states that we are in a failing system. These are the numbers. Here's this graph here. The national target would be right here. We're well above that. If we go to the next one here, this is the state. Just an upper level of where they would consider it okay would be this red line. As you see, we're well above that red line. Here's one just from December 23, '23 to February. This is good standings, and this is us. So we're well above that. Another thing that we have problems with is that we're constantly being stated that we are stealing stuff from out there. Instead of actually looking into the problem, as you can see through these variance reports and everything that I've put together for you guys as a board to look at and consider, that this isn't something that 30 years of water being stolen doesn't make sense. This is 30 years of non-maintenance and neglect on our system. And I'm really requesting that you guys take this into account. I have been here multiple times over a year, ever since the 2018. So anyway, thank you for your time. I really hope you do take this into consideration.
Thank you, Sterling.
No problem.
Any other public comment? All right, come on up. State your name for the record.
My name's Kevin Engel. Good morning to the board and to County Council. I'm just here to let you know that I'm here and that I sent out a packet on Sunday to you guys. Bruno, I'm sorry, I don't think you got yours, but I know you're well familiar with the issue of the Herndon Pioneer Cemetery. Something happened. I think I dropped a T in your name or something on the email. Eh, sorry. I will send it to you if you'd like. So anyway, I'm just here, like I said, to let you know that I'm here. And I would like to request an agenda spot in the near future. This issue, actually, it's 20 years ago, September 27. So maybe we could do it on the anniversary of what this issue was all about. And I just hope the board will live up to the promises of a previous board. And I find it interesting that the last board that dealt with this issue was all men. And a couple of them were a little crotchety. But they all agreed that the Herndon Cemetery should be part of the county's system. And I hope that you will continue that promise and fulfill that promise. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak? Anyone on Zoom? With that, we'll go ahead and close this portion of the agenda, public input, and move on to our 6.2 Pet of the Week from our Animal Care and Control Department.
Hi, I'm Officer Reilly, County Animal Care and Control. And this is Helen. She is a one-year-old pit bull mix. We're assuming that she is deaf. She is ready to please, obviously, and learn quick things. She came in and has been with us for, I believe, about a month, month and a half. I'm super interested in doctors coming down to 4949 Hellbush Drive in Lakeport, behind the jail. We have lots of puppies and adult dogs that are ready to make a wonderful baby.
What is her name?
Helen.
No, that's all.
She knows some ancestors, but not a lot, no.
You wouldn't have to worry about her bark noises.
What's that?
You wouldn't have to worry about her bark noises.
Oh, yeah. All right. There's any takers? Did she say where to go? Yeah, she said where to go. Yep. She said where you can go to adopt?
Yes.
So we'll make sure to remember that because it looks like she likes somebody. All right, thank you. All right. That brings us to our 6.3. Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of September 2025 as National Recovery Month in Lake County. Supervisor Chair Rasmussen will be reading this proclamation.
Is anybody that's here for National Recovery Month? Come on up.
If you're here for it, yeah, please come up and join Vice Chair Rasmussen.
Up here? Hello. Come all the way back.
That's a good.
You can absolutely use that to whatever you need.
This is a proclamation designated the month of September 2025 as National Recovery Month in Lake County. Whereas Recovery Month recognizes the strong and proud recovery community, the dedication of service providers and community members in Lake County who assist and support individuals from prevention services to recovery. And whereas Lake County Behavioral Health Services provided substance use disorder services to 437 participants, Hilltop Recovery Services provided 321 residential treatment beds and provided outpatient treatment to 23 clients. Redwood Community Services, Thule House, provided residential treatment services to 43 women and 18 children. And they also provided outpatient services to one client. And whereas Lake County Behavioral Health Services provided mental health service to 1,751 individuals, Crisis Mobile Crisis Unit provided service to 822 individuals during the calendar year 2024. And whereas nationally, 28.2 million people in the United States experienced a substance use disorder and 27.9 million people had an alcohol use disorder, while 21.2 million experiences both substance use disorder and mental health disorders. And whereas seven in 10 adults who have substance use disorder consider themselves recovering or in recovery. And two in three adults who have mental health disorders consider themselves recovering or in recovery. And whereas through promotion of Recovery Month, people from all walks of life are encouraged to become knowledgeable about what they can do to create a healthier tomorrow for themselves and others by helping to prevent these problems today. And whereas recovery is possible and treatment is effective, people in recovery can and do become gainfully employed, own homes, follow their dreams, and rejoin their families and their communities. Whereas the Lake County Board of Supervisors and Lake County Behavioral Health Services, Substance Use Disorder Services, Mental Health Services, Hilltop Recovery Services, Redwood Community Services, SafeRx, Hope Rising, and Lake County Health Services urges all citizens, families, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, healthcare, education systems in Lake County to support efforts that will increase community awareness, understanding, and action to address substance use disorder and mental health conditions in our community. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake join with the Lake County Department of Behavioral Health Services and hereby proclaim that September 2025 is National Recovery Month in Lake County, passed and adopted this 26th day of August and signed by our Chair of the Board, E.J. Crandall. Thank you. And I just want to reiterate that I think our behavioral health is doing a good job or a great job as a leader in this area. But this is really a collaboration with many agencies, many people, and many partnerships. And I think that's what makes our county very successful. And, you know, just Saturday, I had the opportunity to stop at the overdose awareness event and was again impressed to see virtually all the partner agencies that I'm aware of that were there together to provide service for the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Hi, I'm Elise Jones. I'm the Director of Lake County Behavioral Health. And I am just standing here feeling incredibly proud of the people that are standing behind me, proud of our county. And I agree with Supervisor Rasmussen that the collaboration truly is our superpower. And it's kind of interesting to reflect on recovery because this county has had to do a lot of recovering. I don't know if you all know, but we've had some fires. And it's a joke, guys. So that forced us to collaborate. And, you know, I'm a horror movie fan. And one of the premises for a lot of horror movies is that the grid fails and the system collapses and breaks down. And that happened in Lake County multiple times. Myself, I was, I think, without power for six days, maybe seven days, and even decided to thug it out without a generator. And no calamity ensued. I mean, I'm not going to diminish the impact of those experiences on vulnerable populations. And my experience living in Lake County was that people were here to support each other. And it was pretty calm and peaceful for the most part. So those experiences, I think, have placed us in a unique position to move the needle on some of our social determinant of health issues. And if you don't know what that is, social determinants of health are factors in society that influence health, basically. A big one is income, if you're poor or rich, right? Another one is sometimes where you live, your neighborhood. And the list goes on and on. And so we've definitely had some challenges in this county. But listening to the numbers that were in the proclamation, which I hadn't reviewed actually thoroughly before I stood here today, I am 99% sure that if you were to look back two or five years ago, those numbers would be a lot smaller. The visibility that we have with our community, the ability to reach more individuals has been a leap of faith in many forms because of California advancing and innovating Medi-Cal, if you want to know. And so that's what caused the dramatic increase in services. It's been a gauntlet of policy review, program development. And it's been incredibly painful, to be honest with all of you. But I am so grateful that I was placed in a position of leadership to be able to see this thing through and make sure that we expand services to every vulnerable individual in Lake County who needs them. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Carter-Runyon, Executive Director and co-founder of Hilltop Recovery Services. A minute ago, my husband had mentioned that 20 years ago, when we were here with those Board of Supervisors numerous times, we were fighting for treatment and for substance use. And it was a lot different. I just got back from the Department of Healthcare Services SED Conference. And I have to tell you, I've been screaming for a voice, for us to be heard for so many years. It used to be battling against behavioral health. Now it's with behavioral health. And I had the pleasure of hearing numerous times Lake County being talked about as far as the differences they're making and what they're doing. One of my biggest things that I've been yelling about is our small rural community is not being heard. And for the first time in all the years that I've been going, I felt that Lake County is being heard. And this is part of the example of that. I've got 28 years in recovery. So when they talk about the fact of people being, you know, employed and everything else, it is the truth. It is, you know, people like us do recover. My children have all gone to school here and own homes and work here and not had to live through the disease of addiction. Instead, they're living in the life of recovery. And all of us can do that. I mean, all of us can make that happen with commitment. And this team that they've had at Behavioral Health now, you know, I talked to Elise quite a few times. And she said to me one day, "I don't know why I'm here, but I'm going to do the best I can while I am." And it was so down-to-earth and real. And it's made the difference in the relationships. I mean, in working together. I've been able to work with more of the team and the community again now that COVID hasn't happened and, you know, which really did make some differences. And I'm just grateful. I mean, there has been some great changes, lots of, you know, difficulties and processes. And again, as she mentioned, the fires. When we had to evacuate again last year, which we've also evacuated again this year, we're really good at that, by the way. We had two people, we had, no, we had three or four people at the local JC doing some of their, for their high school diplomas. I had to call Behavioral Health, and they got the people to me so we could all evacuate together. That is something I would have never been able to do before. And that is part of the things that, you know, in a small community, working together is very different, you know? I mean, to know that I could call the Behavioral Health team. And this last time, we just evacuated again a couple weeks ago. I wasn't available. I was actually outside doing yard work. And scary thing is, is April managed to get ahold of me through my daughter, through my Ring camera, of all things, you know? Talking to my grandson in the house, you know? So that's how they got to me. But she made the decision to tell my staff to go ahead and evacuate at the time until they got in touch with me and said she hopes she wasn't overstepping her bounds. But I said, "No, thank you." You know, I was grateful. And that's what the difference with this great team has. And our recovery, I mean, and hope. I have a new hope. I mean, the people that are leading it aren't afraid to share that they too, you know, have been a part of this process. So thank you to the Board of Supervisors for supporting us in this journey. Thank you for, you know, all of you for finding your path into recovery. It's a much better path. And some of you I've known for years, Carrie, you know, I mean, been here from the beginning. So I appreciate it, and I'm grateful today.
My name is Richie Okino. I work for Behavioral Health, specifically with youth. I wanted to share, well, touch on, we do recover, right? I think that people that are in recovery, they actually have more transferable skills than the average person coming out of high school. They actually know how to survive. We spoke a little bit about this at the DHTS conference. And in my experience as an assistant manager at McDonald's of all places, right? What I've seen, people that were even on drugs while at McDonald's were good workers, right? When they were working. But the people that do recover, in my experience, have been great workers, right? They'll stay longer, they'll go the extra mile, right? Because they're just grateful to be having a paycheck and not having to live the way they used to live, worrying about where they were going to sleep at. That's if you are a tweaker's tweaker like me. But that's neither here nor there. The other thing I want to talk about is the collaboration, right? And so I'm here to speak about the youth, right? And so when we think about that, she said she, Lori mentioned that she raised her kids in recovery, right? What I'm seeing every day within the school districts and the school systems, I just did a youth group yesterday. There was four kids in this youth group, and they're seventh and eighth graders. And they were explaining to me that, you know, they have friends where their parents are the ones that are getting them drunk, right? So when we think about this, kids, all through a moral and time, people have wanted to use substances, right? But I think we are in a time where they have access to the internet, whatever they want to see, whatever they want to do. If you are learning these behaviors from your parents, and I know some of you parents, I don't know, maybe nobody here, but hopefully on Zoom if somebody re-watches this, you're the problem. The parents are the problems, in my experience. And what I'm hearing from the kids, it's them that are smoking weed with their kids, giving them vapes to go to school to sell for a side hustle. These are all things that is a problem. And that's called transgenerational drug use, people. And if all we really got to do is look at, you know, I mean, the Native American community, they know all about that. And when we go deeper into each population, unfortunately, you know, they are hit the hardest. But I'm here to basically urge everybody who thinks that, oh, it's a rite of passage to get drunk at 10th, 11th grade. That is, that might be normal in your community. But nowadays, when people get drunk and you say, "Oh, I only want you to get drunk in my backyard," there's a party all of a sudden, and there's a really fine girl that they want to go see, and now they're leaving to that party. Or you think that they're not going to go get drunk there? You think that they're not going to go get drunk and make dumb decisions? And now, unfortunately, forever since time. You know, it's just a fact. People end up doing cocaine. Now you have a possibility of dying, right? 17, 18-year-old, super drunk, and he's inebriated. They make dumb decisions. And now they're doing a line of cocaine that is not cocaine, and then they die, right? Or they take Adderall because they've been watching on their For You page that this is what people are doing, right? And then they die. So really, from my experience working in the last three years, from my experience of my parents actually smoking meth with me, parents are the problem, right? And so you might think that you're not the problem because you're, I'm going to say it, you're white, upper-middle class, or you're like, got everything going on with yourself, and this is just the normal behavior. That is not normal. So you're putting your kids at risk. And I said this last time I had the mic up here. That is a form of child abuse, okay? We all talk about how we worry about the kids, even politicians, from the state to the government, right? We all talk about for the kids until it's time to pass the policy. They don't want to pass that policy because the people that they want to pass the policy on, i.e. tobacco industry, i.e. cannabis industry, i.e. alcohol industry, they got a really, really smart scientist to pay a lot of money to go down there and lobbyists to block people's laws, right? And they're like, "Well, I can't pass that test because they're going to pay me $5 million on my next time that I need to be, the next time that I need to actually be voted in," right? And so that's the problem. That is the problem we see. And those three industries, I didn't mention the pharmaceutical industries, they're the people that are running the world. It's not the Republicans, it's not the Democrats. The people that are running the world are the people that got billions and billions of dollars to go block these policies. There's no reason why we need to have a vape pen in a hoodie, okay? There's no reason that I should have a car alarm. It beeps, like I actually have a damn car, and I'm a 19-year-old, and there's a weed pipe in there, there's a weed vape in there. There's no reason for that. So those are the things, right? And I'm pro-weed. You're an adult, you want to smoke weed, like, that's you. But when, well, when you're saying this, it's not good, right? Because our kids are listening. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone from the board would like, oh, there you go, please.
Sorry, I just wanted to throw out there, we do have Recovery Happens coming up later this month. And I'm trying to double-check the date. I believe it's September 20.
No, 13.
13, sorry, I was off. 10 to 3 p.m., and there is free lunch available. And it'll be a great event for everyone who wants to join us.
Anyone else from? All right, I'm going to go ahead and mention something because you brought up something about Native Americans, and I appreciate that. And I'd like to basically give a synopsis on trauma in a global aspect. But when you look at it, at the Native American aspect, the alcoholism mainly was But when you look at it, at the Native American aspect, um, the alcoholism mainly was the derivative of the generational, transgenerational alcoholism. Um, and, and I have to say that those were developed by the United States because they put the natives on reservations and gave them alcohol as a medicine. Then, within some years later, they took the alcohol and told them that they couldn't have it, which, you know, of course prohibition times, you go through that. Then you get boarding schools, then you have self-medication. Um, so you have to look at that, but regardless, when you, when you go into different cultures, different countries, different areas, and then even in the United States, um, humans deal with trauma the same. So, you know, I'm glad that, you know, I am Native American, I like to mention that, and I need, I like talking about it, but I like to relate everything to the human nature of things, because I've, I have friends and family that, uh, friends that are non-native that deal with it the same, um, no matter what it is. And it, and it all ends up to a point where alcohol doesn't do the job anymore, so a lot of people go to meth or something harder to make sure that they get that. Uh, so, all of, anyone here that is recovering, I, I tell you, a lot of these, um, there's a lot of ailments that, uh, will happen, there's things that'll happen, and you're gonna be faced with that challenge, and we're meant to go through these, these feelings. And that's, that's the main thing that puts people to the point of going back recidivism. Um, but you have to fight through that, and you'll see it's a wave. You need to ride that wave, and you'll see, you'll feel better about the rewards that come with it. Once you get to a point that you've invested all this time into your sober, you know, your sober living and your recovery, what you're gonna see is, you're, you're not gonna want to lose that investment. So, anyone that's listening that is going through recovery, please ride the wave for the rewards.
Richie, you know I love you. Um, when you grab the microphone, it's like a mystery roller coaster ride at times. Um, I, I, I want to share appreciation for everybody that's here. Yes, recovery does happen. I think what we don't say, and I want to mention it, is thank you for being there for those people that stumble, uh, because people do roll back. It happens for everything, um, whether it's the most important thing you need to change in your life, or the smallest thing you want to change in your life. Uh, but you guys don't judge, you guys are there to begin with, and you guys are there for the second and third and fourth try, and thank you for being there.
And you said no one on Zoom, or is there anyone in the chambers that would like to come up and talk about this proclamation? All right, not hearing any, we'll go ahead and close this item, and I know that Sam is gonna want to take a picture, so let's come on up.
Tell us where to go.
Make sure you get Nancy.
So next we have our nine oh seven, consideration of lighting the Lake County Superior Courthouse in purple in recognition behavioral health services. There we go. Director Elise Jones.
Yes, um, and I do, uh, we didn't talk about overdoses, um, specifically in recovery proclamation, but, um, it is, uh, something we're hoping to avoid, right, is so staying alive. And I think we did, uh, we lit the courthouse up in purple last year. Uh, I don't know about previous years, so it's a cool tradition that we're starting. Megan will nod at me to verify this is correct, but National Opioid Overdose Awareness Day is August thirty-first. Yes, and, um, that is the request, thank you.
Supervisors, about you.
Yeah, two things. One, I feel like I failed. I got a email from, uh, Health Services to ask me to put the same thing on, uh, the agenda, so I'm so glad to see it, and I think it was supposed to be on the nineteenth, so I think I failed somewhere, but you helped out, and it's here. Uh, I, I would prefer we not put it on the thirty-first and just put it for the whole entire week until the thirty-first, rather than just one day. Uh, I just think, why not put it up as soon as we can and take it down? I think the thirty-first is Sunday, so it would be taken down on Monday, September first. Uh, I just felt like it was asking for a specific day to be up. I'd say sooner the better, that way we can have the purple lights out and make a deeper impact.
Supervisors, around.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, um, especially with this being Fair Week. So, we'll have a lot of people coming in, and I think that would be phenomenal.
Yeah, it's Fair Week.
Next chair.
I'm okay with it, but it'd probably be September second, since the first is a holiday.
Correct.
Hey, one more day doesn't hurt. All right, uh, anyone from the public? No one in the chambers? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board, and I think this is for action.
Move to approve the purple lights on the courthouse.
It's a resolution.
Oh. I offer the resolution.
Resolution is...
As amended.
Lloyd.
If I may, um, I don't believe there's a resolution.
Oh, I looked at the law.
For this item, so, um, your board, for purposes of the motion, would may consider moving to approve lighting the Lake County Superior Courthouse in purple in recognition in honor of International Overdose Awareness Day for the dates of August thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five through September two, twenty-twenty-five.
August twenty-sixth, if possible, to be done today, uh, all the way through September second. So, that, that motion with the changes to the dates. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Susan?
Uh, we respectfully request a ten-minute break due to technology issues at this time.
Ten-minute break it is, we'll be back at nine fifty. Yeah? All right.
Let me see. It's the lights. Everyone's cutting out.
Now, see, I should take that away.
That's horrible.
And I'm hearing you in Zoom, Sam, and I don't hear the Herd Future Quality Experience.
Right, that's because I routed it back to how it was originally. IT changed, or Jake changed it and didn't tell me. So, um, or he assumed that it was one thing and then I don't do it that way.
Well, we're broadcasting Zoom.
Yeah, okay, so I think we're fine.
We'll discuss that more fully later, but it sounds like it's clear. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. All right, welcome back from the break. We are going to go ahead and move on to our 6.5 Public Hearing, Consideration of Resolution Approving Resolution Number 2025-5, Submitted by North Shore Fire Protection District in Making Findings and Requesting the County of Lake to Implement Fire Mitigation Fees with the Automatic Inflation Pursuant to the Lake County Fire Mitigation Fee Ordinance Fiscal Year 2025-2026, Continued from August 5th and August 19th, 2025. CAO Parker.
Uh, thank you Chair. On behalf of the North Shore Fire Protection District, we were, we respectfully requested this be continued to September 9th at 9:15.
All right, any comments from the board? Anyone from the public? No hands in Zoom. I'll bring it back to the board for that action. Lloyd, we just make that motion or?
Yes. So moved.
Second.
So moved.
And just for the clarification, will you motion to approve the continuation of this item, public hearing to September 9, 9:15 a.m.?
Yes.
Same motion, same second?
Yes.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. Move on to our 6.6 Public Hearing, Consideration of Appeal PL 25-22, AB 24-06 of the Planning Commission's Approval of the Major Use Permit UP 23-05 and Initial Study IS 23-10 for the Ag Forest Wood Processing Bioenergy Project Located at 755 East Highway, East State Highway 20, Upper Lake APN 004-010-04. Appellant Larry Kahn, Continued from May 20th and June 17th, 2025. Community Development Director Maria Turner.
Good morning, Maria Turner, Community Development Director. We are ready to present the appeal today. However, I wanted to make sure the board is aware that we have received requests for continuance from both the appellant's representative as well as the permutee.
Okay. With that, is there, is that what you're, were presented with first?
Typically, the board will deal with a request for continuance prior to us launching our presentation.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, if I may, thank you. Um, your board may want to, uh, whether it's on the continu-, uh, continuance request issue or on the merits, may want to take in testimony for anyone who may be willing to testify, to be sworn in.
Thank you. Uh, Johanna, would... Anyone on Zoom as well, if you're going to, please turn on your camera and raise your right hand.
I don't think they can turn on their camera, but if you, if you're in Zoom and you're going to speak on this item, please raise your hand in Zoom. All right, everybody else with your right hand raised. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, with that, uh, I know, uh, with me, I'm willing to entertain the continuance because of the submittal of the, um, Public Request Act and then also an email from the, uh, project permutee. Any other comments from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah.
Well, we have a consensus, so it looks that way, but we'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Uh, we will be discussing, uh, anything that has to do with the continuance. Uh, we won't be discussing the, uh, the project until we get the next date scheduled. So, anyone that would like to come up and talk about the continuance, please come to the microphone. You have three minutes.
Sorry. We had a mic drop moment.
Hi Supervisors, my name is Barbara Morris and, um, I'd like to speak to you as not only the Board of Supervisors, but as the, um, Lake County Watership Protection District. As the stewards of the Middle Creek Restoration Project, I ask that you please postpone your vote on the Forest Wood Bioenergy Project to be placed on land that should be protected from further development by a conservation easement. You have been entrusted with the responsibility of making sure that this project is done correctly. Many people have had to give up their properties and their homes for the greater good of hopefully restoring the health of the lake. A very important part of this responsibility as laid out in the grant conditions is that a conservation easement be placed on each property after purchase. At some point in this long, over 20-year process, this very important step has been overlooked. There is now a chance to remedy this. Place conservation easements on all the properties that have been purchased and bring the county back into compliance with the grant funding agreement. Forest Wood Bioenergy Project is an industrial, manufacturing, and commercial project that would not be allowed under a conservation easement. Please, rather than taking the county further out of compliance, I request that you postpone this vote and take the time to take a look at this issue and remedy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public, please come to the microphone.
Good morning Chairman, good morning Board Members. My name is Tom Jordan. I am Staff of the Scottsdale Energy Corporation. Just briefly, I concur with the recommendation that we continue this hearing until, and my request would be in the month of October in order to give the county staff and the state staff time to understand the restrictions involved with respect to the information that Ms. Morris has just presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Uh, good morning, um, Board Chair Crandall. Um, I also support having a ten-, continuance, but I would request, a- as I did last time, to make it for a date and time uncertain until the board and the state, or the state and the, um, uh, the parties involved have reached their conclusion. It seems we're all waiting for the state to make a decision and I think it is still within the purview of the board to make it a date and time uncertain until that decision from the state has been granted. Uh, that way, we don't have to keep coming back only to find out the state still hasn't made a decision and we have to continue it again. So I think we're on our third now, so it might be time to rethink the process. And I think the process does allow for, even on a sequo appeal, for a date and time uncertain. It would have to be re-notice, but considering the amount of time that's already gone by, it's probably a more practical way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? All right, on Zoom? All right.
Good morning Chair Crandall, members of the board. Uh, I'm Marsha Birch and I represent, uh, the appellant in this matter. And I just wanted to thank you for considering our request for the continuance. Um, I don't have anything to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions uh, that the board members may have. And if you choose to reschedule it to October, I am not available on October 14th.
Quick question, uh, Marsha?
Yes.
Uh, would a later date in October be better?
I, I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
Would a later date in October be better?
So I, the, um, audio is cutting out again, but I think you asked if a later date in October would be better.
Yes.
Yes, that would be fine.
Chair Crandall, we recommend October 28th at 9:15.
Marsha, did, does that sound like a ideal date?
Yeah, October 28th would be fine for my office.
All right, well, we'll, we'll consider that still. Any other, uh, public input? Or public comment? All right, is there another one?
No, no more.
This time I'll close, close public comment. Supervisor Sabatier? I'll bring it back to the board Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, I, um, appreciate the idea and the concept of, uh, no specific date, but I think it's better to continue with a specific date. But maybe there can be consensus from the board that in the memo or in the headline, we say it will be continued of the DWR response, because I think everyone's waiting for the final DWR response. Uh, because I don't want to keep moving forward and say yes to a project that will have an impact on the Middle Creek Restoration. And until we have a full response, uh, at that point in time, um, i- if we could put it in the headline so people know, uh, no state response will be continued or something along those lines. I think that might be helpful, because yes, it can be a waste of time for people who make it here, but I also don't want to spend money. We don't need to spend on re-notification and using staff or those types of things. So, just looking for a, a middle ground, uh, to see if that would be possible.
Lloyd, is that possible?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, typically when, uh, I don't, when documents are posted in the agenda and that would be part of the notice pursuant to the notice requirements, right? That's typically 72 hours for a regular meeting. So, one option, um, in line with what Supervisor Sabatier mentioned is when, eh, when the documents are posted, uh, for the, uh, board's agenda, um, tentatively speaking, I think the, the date of October 28th was mentioned, that if by then, if by that time, um, there's some updates on the, uh, DWR issue, that that can then be mentioned in, uh, in, in the board memo primarily, uh, as part of the, uh, update on the, on the caption or on the heading itself, so that it would give, uh, some form of notice to the public that depending on the status of that, it, it may be heard on October 28th or, or, or not. That might be one option for your board's consideration. And that, that would, that can be done by direction of staff, um, a lot, in accord, in, along with setting a, a continuance for a date and time certain.
Maria?
Should it be the board's consensus? We're happy to, uh, add to the title on the agenda if we intend to request a further continuance.
All right, I think that sounds like the consensus of the board. With that, uh, we would still need to set the date. Lloyd, correct? Okay.
Yes.
Because it's in my district, if someone can make the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to continue this item to October 28th and I believe it was stated 9:15, at 9:15 on October 28th.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries and we will see this item on October 28th at 9:15 a.m. Well, that is if there is an answer and we'll figure out from Water, uh, Department of Water Resources. All right, close this item 6.6 and our next timed item is not till 1:00 p.m., so I'm thinking, uh, consent.
Do you mind taking up 7:30 first, since, uh, the Director of Social Services is in the room?
Okay. Consideration of Update Regarding Public Guardian Conservatee Bravo Bravo. It's, I just used the military.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah. Social Services Director Rachel Dilman Parsons is coming up and will be presenting this item.
Hello Board, is this on?
Yes.
Uh, thank you for hearing my update today regarding Public Guardian Conservatee BB. Um, as you're aware, BB is conserved. Uh, he is covered by Medi-Cal. Due to his circumstances, it has been difficult to find him a Medi-Cal-covered placement and care. Uh, Public Guardian is not a state-funded or federally funded program, thus his private pay placement costs have been covered by County General Fund since November 1st. In May, we were able to find him a less expensive private pay facility here in Lake County with a base rate of 3,600 per month. His veterans and social security benefits are approximately 3,600. It will cover his placement going forward. Both of these, um, income sources has just started for BB. So the good news is, we're not asking for any more general funds to support BB's placement. We're going to have to move him to a Medi-Cal-covered facility before we can use his income to repay general fund. We are continuing to seek a Medi-Cal-covered placement for him. Um, and then, once we find a Medi-Cal-covered placement, um, our proposal is to work with county admin and auditor to repay general fund, making this the last update to your board unless you direct me to bring further updates to you. Um, and thank you for providing this bridge funding to ensure BB received adequate care and making sure he wasn't on the street posing himself, posing a risk to himself or others. That's it.
All right, any comments from the board? I'm going to open it up for public comment. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I definitely prefer this being the last, I, I definitely prefer this being the last update. I appreciate that there is no more general fund request and, uh, thank you for being diligent and moving that along and looking forward to seeing how and when that can get repaid.
And so I, my mistake, it's an update, so we don't need action on this? All right, well, thank you. We'll close this item and appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you. 5.2 please.
We'll bring, uh, the next item from the consent agenda that was pulled. Adoption or Adopt Resolution Amending Resolution 25-20, or 76, Establishing Position allocations for Fiscal Year 2025-2026 to Conform to the Recommended Budget and Approved Salary Grade Adjustments Based on Findings from the 2024 Compensation Study. Supervisor Sabatier, you pulled this if you'd like to.
Yes, I pulled this. There's a small fact, facet of changes that are being made. Uh, the relationship changes, which changes, uh, adjusts the grades. And I just, again, I, I'm, I'm picky about this, that this is something that we should go in closed session and make sure that they're in approval of before we publicly make these types of approvals where we make changes to a contract we literally just signed less than a month ago. Uh, so my personal opinion is, I'm going to abstain because I think our process should be, we go to closed session, say this is what we're offering, they approve that, they approve or not approve of what we're offering and then we come back and finish this off. Whether it was a typo, it's in the contract, we're changing the contract. I think we should have a conversation prior to us just making an approval. So that's just my statement.
All right, any other comments from the board? Uh, di- would you like to elaborate or is there anything you have?
Sure. Um, the first set of changes in A were just a bench adjustment for the Water Resources Director. Um, he came in after we gave him his bench. He found a couple of matches that were actually a better match. Um, we made adjustments and so we're adjusting his. The, um, second grouping, which is all management, was simply a sorting error. When they sorted the grade table, um, it sorted it with the wrong grades. So this is a correction, making the grades that actually we all agreed upon. The, um, B, the management change relations were simply because these grades, we did not realize when you're looking at 650 grades, that these two positions managed people that were in lower grades. So, we have an internal relationships, four to six grades, between supervisor and manager. Um, because we didn't know these two positions managed people, we didn't use the proper grade spread. So this is just correcting, um, that grade spread. Um, the fiscal coordinator, one and two, um, that's just moving it from unit three to unit four. Uh, those were previously reclassed and they were left on the wrong, uh, unit table. Um, and then the last ones were simply left off the table, um, when it was sorted and we're putting them back on. There's no changes to the grades.
All right. I will open it up for public comment. All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I'll, for the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
All right, uh, Supervisor Owen?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Abstain.
Supervisor Osmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye. All right, resolution passes 401. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
72 or?
Yes, uh, Director Valdez is on the, on Zoom.
Okay. All right, so next item is 7.2, Consideration of Appointing Qualified Candidates in Lieu of a General District Election. of a General District Election for the Scots Valley Water Conservation District under Elections Code Section 10515. Register our voters, Maria Valdez. If you're on Zoom, you can join us, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So my agenda is pretty straightforward. It's Scots Valley Water District had two vacancies up for election this November, and no one filed for either of the two vacancies. So it comes back to the Board to try and make an appointment prior to December 1st to fill these two vacancies as if they were elected in lieu of an election. And if that happens, then they would just serve out, one of them would serve out the remainder of the four-year term, and the other would be a two-year term. I understand that as of right now, there's, we're looking into, or the Board is looking into dissolving the district, but as of right now, it's not dissolved. So trying to find two people to fill those two vacancies would be very beneficial to the district so that after December, if the district hasn't been dissolved, there'd still be some directors there. But the term for the one director expires in December this year. So that would be the Board to try to find somebody to fill these two seats. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the Board? All right. I will open it up for the public. All right. All right. Let's see if you can unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm just curious as to whether any direct communication has been attempted with the landowner/voters in the district. I'm very familiar with the district formation and its purpose. I will be very interested to see what LAFCO does with its study of the purpose of the district. But I know that a lot of people don't really understand that they're in the district. And I don't know that any attempt has been made to directly communicate with them the purpose of the district and their potential role in that if they care to participate.
All right.
Is that question for me or for the?
It's for the Board.
Okay.
The Board's being asked to do this task. I'm asking the Board if it has attempted to do the task, you know, to engage the voter/landowners.
I'm not sure if that has taken place.
I was going to make a comment.
Go ahead.
When public comment, I guess, is closed?
Okay.
Or if you wanted to address it now?
Yeah. I'll close public comment as of now. Okay. Maria, please go ahead and elaborate.
I just want to clarify that this is not a landowner district. It's an elected, registered voter district. And we do do a publication and a media release advertising for the two vacancies as well as notifying the current directors who are supposed to post it somewhere within the district boundaries.
All right. Vice Chair?
During the work that I had been doing regarding this district, I have talked to various individuals that are in that footprint of the Water Conservation District, as well as several times addressed it and provided an overview of what was going on with it at the Scots Valley Community Revisory Council out there in, that's in that same area. It's a larger area, but it does encompass the area where the footprint of the Water Conservation District is. So I think the words have been out there. You know, I've discussed it. I've talked to people individually and several times through that town hall meeting. And certainly, you know, with the process that we're going through, the public notice part, everyone in there is going to be getting a letter or a notice.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
Just a quick question. With all of the recommended actions that are in here, obviously, it's not actions for today, except for maybe just A by itself. But just a quick question. Directing staff, are we just defaulting to the CAO's office? Who are we directing to find qualified candidates? I'm just curious about that.
Well, I would think that it would be having the CAO staff do an outreach or a notice similar to what we do for any other Board. Advisory Board, or for example, when we had to consider appointment of fire district members on that special district, I think we just put out a notice similar to those advisory boards saying that we're seeking applicants. If anyone's interested, they can apply. So that's the way I would envision it.
So I have a maybe confusing request. I believe last time we talked about this, when we talked about the LAFCO process, there was still $25,000 in the bank. Is that $25,000 available to pay for the soliciting of qualified candidates rather than the county paying for that? And maybe even county staff time being paid for? Just a question.
I wouldn't be able to answer that question right now. I think it's a legal question regarding how that money can be spent. I know right now what it can legally be spent on and has been spent on is costs associated with elections, which there's going to be a bill right now, a small bill to that account from the registered offices' work that they've done up to this point regarding that election that was supposed to happen. I think it's questionable whether or not that money could be used for other things. Maybe it can, but I couldn't answer that. I think that's a legal question that I don't know that we can answer today. I think there's got to be more research on it. I know that there's language within the laws regarding if a district does get dissolved, that the money is supposed to be spent on a project beneficial to the area where that district existed. So I think, you know, that's something we have been looking into as far as how the money can be spent. And I know that ultimately, if the district does get resolved, this Board is going to be the successor agency to wrap up. And at that time, I think it's going to be in this Board's decision authority on how that money is distributed. So I think we could have answers down the road. I just don't know that we can now.
Yeah. I'd like to see if we can look into that, see if what's possible, and if we can't, we can't.
So with that being said, do we need to continue this and look into that? Or do we make a decision today?
Well, I think we can handle A section, which is direction to staff to put out a recruitment notice for any interested candidates. And the other items would be dependent on, we may not get a candidate. You know, we just have to see at that point, so that's where I'm at.
All right.
I would say to also give direction to staff to keep track of time and cost in case we can recoup.
And I think that was also included.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, but I think it was stated in the last, not related to a similar item, so I'm fine with that.
All right. So with A, Lloyd, do you have any? Go ahead.
Well, yeah, as Vice Chair Rasmussen mentioned, thank you, Mr. Chair. You do, your Board does have subitem A for consideration, which is the direction of staff to find qualified candidates to be appointed to the positions. And that can be done just by consensus. Also, for your Board's considerations are B items, subitems B, C, and D. C being further direction of staff to draft a resolution. And then B and D are scheduling items that can also be done via direction of staff if there is already a date in mind. That's also before your Board, but your Board may consider just segmenting it out just by doing A alone. I know that's been mentioned by Vice Chair Rasmussen, and then possibly for another item to come back to your Board, depending on how, what the results of the direction of staff under A are like. And then in addition to that, you also have your Board's direction of staff to track time as raised by Supervisor Owen.
So maybe it could be, should qualified candidates be found, the direction could include to schedule a date at that point to, I mean, ahead of time, if we find candidates, we could schedule a date to interview or to consider those candidates for appointment with any required resolution.
And as far as the scheduling of the date, your Board may utilize that via direction to come back to your Board for some proposals as to the date. Or your Board may delegate that as part of the direction of staff to set a date. And that's under item B and D where there are, where it asks for scheduling of dates. Your Board may delegate that to staff as part of the direction so that staff can just determine the date of, under B, to choose qualified candidates to come back to your Board, and under D, to schedule the date to pass the resolution. So that's one option. Or your Board can just set those dates now as part of the direction of staff.
Susan?
Thank you, Chair. I recommend that you delegate it to staff to set a date for future consideration.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Looks like we have a consensus. Supervisor Sabatier?
I just have curiosity. What happens if we don't find qualified candidates? What's our next step? We just allow that district to have less than enough directors? Like, is there any action that we take at that point? It's just curiosity, but just kind of expectations are.
Lloyd?
I'm looking at registered voters, Valdez. They may have some information on that.
Maria?
So usually, when a district falls under a quorum, then it would still fall back onto the Board of Supervisors, in this case, to meet that quorum, at least appoint one person. There's three seats for that district, and currently, there's two directors. So the Board would still at some point have to appoint somebody to meet that quorum.
Okay.
If it doesn't happen now.
Thank you.
All right. Lloyd, anything else?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I believe there's consensus under items, subitems A, B, and D. And just to further clarify, C is also asking for direction of staff to draft a resolution. It's interrelated to the other items. But would that, and just if, also by consensus, if your Board is willing to provide that direction of staff as well?
Susan, anything else? So it looks like we have consensus for direction to staff for A through D. Do we need anything else, or do we have that consensus, and we can move forward, Lloyd?
Yes, and just to add, that other direction to staff to track their time as well.
Okay, excellent. So we have that. Anything else from the Board? Did I open it to the public?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. I did. I did. Okay. That's right. All right. With that, we can close this item with the direction to staff. 7.2 is now closed. Calendars, or is there anything else?
You may wish to go into closed session.
Well, let's go into closed session. Let's see, we got, that's what we'll do. Closed session items, 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation Special District Administrator. 8.2, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9D1, FERC Proceeding Number P77, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. With that, we will go into closed session.